Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman, and as President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's pre-agenda board meeting. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SASD. All items that will be discussed in our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most of the items on our agenda this evening will be discussed tonight and voted upon at our regular board meeting. As members of the SASD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we do have a public comment item on our agenda that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public forum located in the back of the room prior to the start of tonight's meeting. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. You will be notified when your time is up. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicate on the form you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance being processed by the district, you will not be permitted to speak about the grievance during public comment. Also, please understand if you offer public comment that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since this matter has not been posted for discussion. I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and your support of SASD. With that, we do have a quorum, as Mr. Gaius pointed out, and we will move on into public And Mr. Virgil Pasetti with the topic of leadership.
My name is Virgil Pasetti, a concerned father. I'm here today to speak to you about some things that have been happening in my son's school, and I do believe it's because of lack of leadership. And I want to do it in a public forum because I want to make sure that you're not able to hide behind the grievance process or hide behind any of the other things. I want to make sure that there is no plausible deniability, that you know that this situation is happening, so that if something does occur, I don't want y'all to be surprised because I told you about it, and I did so on a public forum. So, you know, I've been having problems with the STEM lab at my son's school. I've been asking for a year and a half to have that teacher to please quit screaming at my son and to please quit using, taking away the STEM's lab as punishment for when other students are doing something but he's not. Yet, that continues to happen. I filed grievances. I met with the principal. I met with the principal again, and they keep telling me, "We've dealt with it. We've dealt with it." It continues to happen. Then, about three weeks ago, my son comes home and he tells me about being exposed to pornographic material at school, and I said, "Well, what happened?" He goes, "Well, this kid ran up and showed it to me on the school iPad, and the substitute that we have has been on her phone all day, and she doesn't do anything with the kids. She just lets them run around." So, I went to the principal, as y'all say, spoke to him, and they said, "Well, we've previously had a problem with that person. We raised it to HR. They didn't do anything. Sent her back, and then, yes, your son got exposed to pornographic material, but we're looking into it, and we're sorry." Then, I see my son drawing a diagram of the school, and I'm thinking, "What is this? Fire Prevention Week or something?" And I'm like, "They already did that. All the kids at Fort Concho won, son. You've got to let that go." And he's like, "No, I'm drawing a map of where me and my friends can hide on the playground because there's this one particular kid that is threatening to kill everybody and beat them up. He's already assaulted the teacher. He told her to F off, flipped all us offs, told us to suck it, and he does this every day. They send him to the principal's office, they feed him goldfish, and then send him back, and now he's specifically threatening my friend, and now my friend's hanging anxiety attacks about it." And I said, "Well, I'll see what I can do. I'll go talk to the principal, but I'm sure nothing will get done." Because as you've told me, when it comes to leadership, that you're not going to have your leadership fall on their own sword. But see, the problem is, you're not holding your people accountable, and guess who's fallen on that sword? Our children. So, if something happens now at Bowie because of this kid, he assaults a teacher or assaults another student, it's on y'all. So, don't come and ask me about it. Don't talk to me. Don't do anything like you normally do, but if something happens, I'm going to let everybody know that y'all knew about it and didn't take any action as usual.
All right, we are going to move forward with our meeting. We're going to start with our Finance and Audit Committee Workshop, and we'll turn that over to Mr. Dindell.
Thank you, Dr. King. We've got some reports on board tonight, and our first report is a management oversight report concerning transportation, and Mr. Garcia is here to talk to us about that. Welcome, Roger.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Dr. Moran, thank you for the opportunity. First, I wanted briefly to discuss what it takes to run an operation our size. Approximately 92 personnel units, team members, 43 drivers, two drivers in training, and as of yesterday, or Friday, these two individuals finally got their CDL, so now they're full-fledged bus drivers. Fifteen monitors, eight administrative staff, five mechanics, and nine substitute drivers. As always, the challenge is we've got postings, we have vacancies, we have two mechanics. Mechanics are hard to find. We just can't compete with the trucking industry. They just pay them too much money. One general ed router, seven drivers, and four monitors. As far as the major expenditures, that would be your parts and supplies, fuels, diesel, and of course, your contracted services. You'll notice the 2024, that is year-to-date, so I expect those numbers, and they will go higher because we do still have vehicles at truck shops getting repaired. We have buses in our shop currently being worked on, so we're going to buy parts, and of course, we're in the middle of UIL, so lots of diesel fuel and gasoline will be used. Third-party charter. This is the chart where we were chartering buses out. If you notice that there's been a decline, we've been trying to cut it in half. That takes work. That also takes commitment. We have to really focus on our fleet first to get them up and running, and we've done a pretty good job of doing that, and so, as time goes, we're hoping that that continues to decline. In a perfect world, we wouldn't have that, but because we do have a shortage of drivers, we don't seem to have enough drivers to take the out-of-town trips and do the routes we have to do in town during the days, especially on Friday nights. Another thing that we're tracking is, we currently rent 18-wheeler tractor-trailers for band. We rent box trucks for the football team, and so, as you can tell, there's a little expense there, almost $100,000 last year. We're trying to chip away at it and try to maybe not use as many. I think once we get the entire charter fleet rolling, we'll be able to use them as well to load up more instruments and stuff and less rider trucks, so hopefully, we can bring that cost down. As far as the fleet's concerned, we have 89 school buses. Of those, 64 are the full-size, big buses, 25 are the smaller special-needs buses, 12 charters, which are eight vanhools and four freight liners. We have two extracurricular microbuses, and then we have nine buses, of course, on order right now. Five of those have already arrived. Four of those are in Lubbock getting retrofitted with cameras and radios, so the industry's starting to catch up. It used to take almost two years. They've got it back to where it used to be, where you order them in October, and they start arriving in March and April, and that's kind of what's going on now, which is good. As far as the ridership's concerned, we have 37 gen ed routes, 13 special-needs routes, transport about 1885 in regular and 300 in special, 112 daily shuttles, about 2,200 students are transported, and that's primarily between Central, Central Oaks, Lakeview Central, and West Texas Training Center, plus all the athletic groups that are being transported around town. Looking forward, the last time I was here, I mentioned our bus replacement schedule, so we need to continue that conversation, make sure we have a good schedule in place so that some of these numbers can continue to go down. And we've identified some other needs. Our facility was built in the '70s, so you can imagine what the parking lots are starting to look like, especially with the weight of the buses. So, we are looking at having to resurface and reconstruct the main parking lot, which is going to take some money and going to take some time. We did have some pretty bad spots, and our maintenance team came by and leveled them off for us and presented a leafy, just temporarily hoping that nobody trips and falls. Another area of concern is our special-needs program. My understanding is that, over the years, it's been condensed from 18 routes to 13 routes. The hope is next year, we can increase that. It's not so much the numbers, but the distance that we cover. 201 square miles is a lot of area to cover, and when you're doing curbside, it just takes too much time. And so, we're hoping by adding two more routes and making the pieces smaller of the pie, buses, the kiddos don't have to be on the buses long. Right now, I'm not comfortable with the amount of time they're having to ride on the bus, but because of short staff, there's really not much we can do. Let's see. Also, things that we need to look forward to are our gen ed routes. We know that because of consolidation, we've identified 153 students that could potentially ride from the area north of Houston Hart. History tells us that approximately 20% will ride, so that's one bus. So, we're going to prepare as if all 153 are going to ride, which is three buses, but hope that only 20% show, which will be one bus. So, that's kind of like hope, and that's what we're preparing for. Additionally, we're still working on bell schedules, so not sure what the impact's going to be for athletics now that Central Main is going to be kind of consolidated, so it just depends on what it's going to cause us and at what time. If, for instance, all the athletes are bused to the stadium at 3:00, that'll be a challenge because at 3:00, we're taking their elementary's home. So, those are things that we'll have to work through. And of course, in the future, we'll also have to discuss our white fleet. Like I mentioned, we have several vanhools, several freight liners, but they do have age, and we are spending money to maintain them, so at some point in time, we either commit to more newer ones or start scaling back and use more yellow instead of that type of bus. So, at this time, if you have any questions for me, I'll try to answer them for you.
First, Mr. Garcia, thank you for heating the call and coming back to SASD to help us with the Transportation Department. We knew you went away for a while, but you never lost heart and came back and helped us, and we appreciate that for sure. A couple of questions on the third-party charters that we've been reducing the cost. Did our pre-arrangement of transportation help any at all with contracting buses earlier in the year for certain dates? Did that help alleviate some of the costs instead of calling on Thursday and saying we need two buses on Friday or whatever, however that works?
Yes, it helped, and I think the main thing that helped was the, our commitment to using our equipment and our staff first. And then, if we use outside vendors, try to use them only for the shorter trips and save the longer ones for us, because they charge you by the mile. So, the further they go out, the more days they go out, the more expensive it is. So, leave the big stuff for ours and save them the little stuff that we can't do for them.
Okay. Also, you mentioned we were spending about $100,000 this year on a box truck. Is that on a box truck or is that box truck rentals?
That's rentals, and that's multiple. That's two tractors.
So, more than one.
And then, there's at least two box trucks. So, total of four vehicles. And what they would have been, the program that was in place is, they would keep all four at our yard in the event we needed them, because if you release them, it's difficult to get them back.
Right.
They lease them out, so they felt more comfortable keeping all four in place. After football season, we went ahead and released a box truck and a tractor and just kept two, hoping that that would do for the rest of the year, and it's worked out well for us.
Okay. Good, good. I don't know if there's a possibility that we might include a box truck in future purchases as far as transportation is concerned.
It's possible to look at.
I'm not sure what one box truck rental is worth buying a box truck, so that's why I ask you if the $100,000 was for a box truck or a bunch of box truck rentals.
Yeah, I know those 18-wheelers, especially the newer ones, they'll set you back a lot of money, and then you have your updates and, you know, upkeeps and trying to maintain them. So, leasing is probably the best way to go at this time. It's just not trying to hang on to them all year round even though you're not needing them. Just keep them during the peak times and just keep maybe one or two instead of all four. That's going to be the best way to go at this point in time.
Right. Couple more questions. I know that we have a kind of a plan in place, and the board is fully expecting us to see that we buy at least seven or eight buses a year now instead of one or two to try to keep our fleet rotating out with a reasonable lifespan on it. I'm not sure if we want to move forward, and the next time you present a budget, that we may start that with our white fleet, too. I know you said we've got 12 active buses on those. Are all those running at this point?
Yes, we got them all running.
Okay. I know that several, a couple of the vanhools are probably in their latter stages of life.
Yes.
I'm guessing, so I'm not sure if that's something we want to, we might see in our budget and then see if we can stomach it or not for sure, because our travel is not going to decrease anytime soon that I know of, so.
No.
And then, lastly, I know we brought the four freight liners about. It seems like yesterday, but it's probably four years ago. Are they proving any more or less, as far as more or less efficient as far as maintenance and operations is concerned?
Well, because the vanhools were purchased used, and the freight liners were purchased brand-new. It's kind of hard to compare them. I can tell you, personally drove the freight liners when I came back, and they don't drive or ride like a vanhold does. They don't have the carrying capacity. They don't have the power. We did visit with the manufacturer at a convention not long ago, and they have started making those upgrades to the freight liners, a stronger power plant, bigger compressors for the air conditioner. The air conditioners can't seem to keep up now. They're just hot. They're starting to make these adjustments, but...
All at the same price? Great.
Yeah. I was going to say, that was where the buck came in.
Appreciate that for sure.
They bumped them up to $425,000, I believe it was, 425.
A new freight liner is now 425? When we purchased those last ones for 250?
Those were...
Two, or 270?
270, I think. So, they've jumped almost 50%.
Okay, yeah. Price is staying on the road, though, so. Anyway, that's just a thought on my part, that we might start to replace our vanhools with a bus of choice that we might move forward to, and if we've got 12, it'd be about one and a half a year to stay in the 12-year range or somewhere in there, or actually, yeah, one a year to stay in the 12-year range.
That's the conversation that we'll have. I will get pricing for both the vanhold new and the freight liner, and we can sit down and discuss it at that time.
I know the vanhools new were, I don't, I can't remember. They were significantly more expensive than the freight liners when we first started, but yeah.
They caught up.
And they're not new. You're getting them used.
That's correct.
I mean, they rebuild them and all that. They're like brand-new.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all the questions I've had. Any board have any other questions?
Roger, on the vanhools, are we still sending them off to Fort Worth if they need any maintenance, or are we doing it here locally?
We're doing the preventative here. If it's a major engine replacement or transmission, they're better equipped than we are, and no shop here in town has the tooling to get them done. So, the last two, they loaded up on tow trucks, took them over there. They'd been sitting for a couple of years. They got them repaired back, and they're up and down the road now.
Oh, okay.
Some good news.
They were sitting in our yard for a couple of years.
No, I'm sorry.
They were sitting there in our yard for a couple of years?
One at a truck shop here in town and one in the yard, yes.
Wow.
I just want to, sorry.
Oh, no. And then, I was going to ask you about drivers. How's that coming along? Are you starting to get more?
No, and I think it's not so much the money. It's the demands and the criteria to become a bus driver now that the state has layered on, and it's just taken so much time to get them licensed, trained, and certified that it's, we've had some come onboard and they lose interest after going and testing and not being able to pass, and they give up. We've had a couple that got their license and they took off to go work somewhere else with their CDL. That's always a hazard. We're working with HR now in hopes that we can bring in some subs and start training them now and prepping them so that when school starts, hopefully, we can fill in some of these vacancies. But it's going to, it's always been a battle. The money's better, but the demands are more than what they were a few years back, so...
Go ahead, go ahead.
We're not the only ones. I've talked to lots of people in the industry, and they're all having the same problem. There are just too many demands. The split shift doesn't work well for people. You know, they want to come in and work their eight hours and go home, but here, you've got to split it, AMPM routes. Of course, not everybody's meant to work with kiddos, and kiddos will push their buttons at times, so...
They would never do that.
It's a challenge. It's a challenge.
And then, also, Roger, on the extra 153 kids, I guess we're going to have because of the shuttering of, I guess, Fannin, I mean, not Fannin.
Yeah, these are Austin students that will be going to McGill.
Are the majority of them, are they all going to go to McGill?
All of Austinville.
All of Austinville?
Which is the north side of Houston Hart.
Yeah, north of the Houston Hart.
And the city does have crossing guards there at Van Buren.
Yeah, they do.
But you're talking about kiddos having to walk head east to that spot just to walk back to get to the school.
That's a long way.
And it's a long way, and you don't want to take a chance of one of them deciding, "I'm not going to walk that far and try to get across."
What they'll do, they'll walk all the way down. And the next one is Garfield.
Garfield.
I don't think they have a crossing guard there.
And then walk back.
And then walk back.
So, it's, like I said, we identified 153 based on our routing software, but if history tells us, 20% might ride, so maybe one bus full, and we'll maybe assign a stop at the school where kids are used to walk into, catch a bus, and then get them across.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was just going to say thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We really appreciate everything you've done for us the last several months, and so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Roger. It's good to see you again, for sure.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have a report from, a report or not a report, from Mr. Kalmbach on the TEA Intruder Detection Audit. Are we, you can give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down, and that way we know we're good or not. That way, we don't divulge any information that we shouldn't.
That's it. That's it. It's a thumbs up. This month, there were no findings in our intruder audits, so there's nothing to report, which is great to be able to report.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kalmbach. I knew that would probably be pretty short, but thank you for coming up. Next, we have a construction update from Mr. Henry. Thanks for hanging with us, Jason, tonight.
Absolutely. Go ahead and jump right on into it. Tonight, I'm going to update you on our two major construction projects that we have going right now. The first one will be McGill Elementary School. What I did was I put together kind of a time lapse for everybody to see. This is where we were in January, then in February, then March, and then here's where we're at today. Today at McGill, they, so far, they've completed, they're going to be completing all the sheathing this week. The roofers need about seven more days before they can, I found out from the other contractor, before they can move over to Fannin. Brick delivery should be this week, and then they're going to start laying brick either the last part of this week or the beginning of next week. Freezer and cooler assembly should begin this week. That's going to be the big push, is they're going to start in the kitchen and then start working their way around. Two to three more walls to frame up, and then they'll be completely done with the framing. They have one wall that goes across the front of the kitchen that they need to do, and then they have one wall on the very front where they've been pushing equipment and stuff through that they need to frame up. Anybody have any questions over McGill? I did, I went ahead and added this in there. I know everybody loved the beam signing, and today, when I was over there, I could, you could see the beam. It's over the, over one of the windows in the main office. I thought I'd take a picture of that. Everybody enjoyed that.
And that's at McGill?
Yes, sir. Fannin Elementary, same thing. The sheathing is nearly completed. They have a couple of small spots that they just need to fill in. They're doing all the waterproofing. That's what the gray stuff on the outside of that is, or weatherproofing. Currently, they're pulling wire over there. The door frames on the interior have already been installed. Base material for the driveway and the parking lot by the gym have been dumped out, and they just need to level it out and compact it. They're supposed to start and finish that this week. All the skylights have been roughed in down through the middle of the corridor. We'll go ahead and, I've got, this is where we were in January again, and then February, they had all the exterior and the part of the roof on, no interior walls, and then March, here's where they were last month, and then here's the way it looks today. They've got all the weather shooting on, or weatherproofing on the outside. Does anybody have any questions over any of that? No? Perfect. Thank you all very much.
Jason, I know when they get that parking lot finished out front, that's going to be a big plus for seeing the completion of that project, because a lot of that is dirt work over there, and it should clean up that campus quite a bit when they get that done.
Absolutely. They've got a bunch of dirt work that's going on over there right now that they continue to work on. It'll be a game changer.
Jason, I know we have a plan for McGill. Fannin's going to be ready in August?
That's what we're planning on right now.
Yes.
I asked the contractor today.
It will be ready by August.
I asked the contractor today, and he said he was on schedule to open in August.
August 25, so we're going to be good, Dr. King. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. They're moving along quite fast now. Again, if they could finish some of that dirt work over there, it would make that project look more complete, for sure. Last report, probably a brief report from, on the downtime historic overlay, and Dr. Moran has some brief words about that.
Just a few comments. The board's aware that the City of San Angelo is considering 218 North Oaks for historic overlay. We've discussed this at a previous meeting. Since that meeting, we have, as an administrative team, have gone to the city and met with them to discuss the plan. Our request was to get all of the facts on the table, and they're working with us. So, we're in a good position as far as working with the city, and if there's an update in the coming month or so, we'll bring that to you, but at this point, that's where we are.
Thank you, Dr. Moran. Any questions on that? Good. If not, we'll move forward to our bills and accounts for March. If you want to turn to page nine in your board book, we're still showing an unassigned balance of approximately $53 million. That's about a four-month cushion in our budget, and we need to, our TEA rules say that we need to maintain at least a three-month balance, so we're a little ahead of that just in case problems arise, but we have some major building projects that are coming out of fund balance, so that's a safe figure that we hold on to as we move forward. Should be about right on that. If you want to go to page 12, that is the March revenues and expenditures report. Right now, revenues are at 66%, which most of that, again, is local, which is about $47 million, which is about 91% of the collected rate. And then, our state funds so far are $37 million, which is about 50% of the total And then our state, state funds so far are thirty-seven millions, which is about fifty percent of the total collections that we get from the state. So as this time of year, revenues again, because they're, from the local revenue comes in basically in December, January and February. That's why we've collected the bulk of that. And we'll talk about that in the tax report as we move forward. And then the state kind of helps us finish, finish out the year as we move forward. Expenditures are at about, at sixty point three percent. We're in a seven-month of a budget process. So we should be somewhere around fifty-eight percent for revenues expenditures. Again, slightly ahead, sixty-six percent on revenues and then also sixty point three percent on our expenditures. Some of those expenditures we pay once a year. Those are in that, in that budget. So that sixty three, sixty point three percent is not surprising. So we're right in line where we should be moving forward. Any questions on that? Revenues and expenditures report? If not, page fourteen through thirty-four is our checkbook. Lots of checks this month. I'm not sure if anybody's got any questions about any of those. Obviously you can review that report and before we make the final approval next week, you can always email Dr. Brandon and he can clarify any of those checks moving forward and respond in a Friday fax or, or personally. So. See anything outrageous. So any, any questions now about the checkbook? And if not, just make sure you let Dr. Brandon know. Want to move forward to page thirty-five, which is our investment report that compares March of twenty-four to February of twenty-four. February twenty-four, our interest income was four hundred seventeen thousand dollars procs with ninety-eight million dollars invested. March of twenty-four, again slightly less, three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, but we only had ninety million dollars invested. I'm, I'm banking that, or I'm guessing that we're moving some investment money out into general fund because we've got some hefty construction bills coming up. So I'm, I'm sure we're, we're cashing in on some of those investments as they mature and bring them into our fund balance. So we can pay those bills coming forward in the next couple of months. That is the March, February twenty-four versus February twenty-four report. Page thirty-six is the investment report that compares March twenty-four to March of twenty-three. Again, March of twenty-three, we, our, our interest income was three hundred fifty-two thousand with a ninety-three million dollar investment. In March twenty-four, again, three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars with a ninety million dollar investment. So again, slightly better rates this year for March twenty-three. So we're seeing some, some better returns on those funds. See what the Fed does in the next couple of months. They're talking about some decreases. So we'll see where that goes. Page thirty-seven through thirty-nine also breaks down our investment portfolio. I'm not sure if you guys have any questions about that, where that money's actually at. That actually concludes our investment report. I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of the investment report categories that we just talked about. If not, we can move forward to ta, to page forty, which is our tax report. Again, twenty twenty-three is going to show significantly less collected because of the tax reduction rate by the state this past year. Again, twenty twenty-two, we showed a collection, collections of sixty-one million, which was about ninety percent, ninety-two percent of those funds. In twenty twenty-three, significant difference, fifty-one million coming from the local effort, which is a ninety-three percent collection rate. So slightly better collection rate, but ten million dollars less that we receive in local revenue, which is going back to our local taxpayers, our local tax base in the form of reduction in their property tax. Page, no question about the tax report. Page forty-one and forty-two lists POs over twenty thousand dollars. We are purchasing a few truck parts, a little food, mariachi uniforms, fuel. The SUSE remodel consulting fee is in that, in that PO. Also, the cost of the move, IT move from Altaloma, or excuse me, to Altaloma is in there. Also buying some furniture and a forklift and flooring. Any questions about any of those POs? If not, that completes the finance and audit committee's workshop. Dr. Kingman?
Perfect. Thank you, Bill. All right. We're going to move forward. Item four, we're going to move to next week. We're going to include all that together. So we'll go on to item five, which is our proposed agenda. We have several recognitions next week. Students and as a reminder, what I'm thinking about at five fifteen, we have a, everyone has to be here early, right? Showcase? Yes, okay. And a showcase next week. Then we're going to do Central Lakeview music groups in a minute, public comment. Construction update. Shelley, you're going to tell us about summer programming next week. We don't need to do that today. Fantastic. I think we take the historic overlay update off for next week unless
I agree.
Unless we need something, unless there is an update on that. But we're obviously very appreciative of the city's working with us on that. So now let's go through and look at some consent items. Bills, accounts, financial statements will stay regular. Instructional materials. Farah, Dr. Gomez, excuse me. You, do we?
Matt is going to present that. And I sent it to you in Friday fax, just the full details.
Right.
Just didn't get it to be important that I presented to you about the teacher input. That was part of that. It will be less than ten minutes. Few slides to go through that.
Perfect.
It was quite expansive, the proclamation.
So we're going to keep that, so we're going to keep that regular. And Matt's going to do that.
And TIA?
No, that's for the proclamation of K eight science, high school science, tech apps and some CTE courses.
Perfect.
TIA was week before last. This past week was the proclamation for the science and CTE and then their recommendations.
Love it. We'll, we'll hear about that just once. And so Tasby Board Policy, this is the sister policy to the CV local policy, the local policy we did.
CH?
CH, thank you. Last month, we just, there's two different policies. We got to get both of them lined up in congruence. So everyone okay with that being consent? Portable building relocation. Mr. Henry?
This one is actually a placeholder. We'll be opening that bid on Wednesday. And this is for moving the four portable buildings that are needed at Central with the movement of the Central Oak students. These are coming from Grounds, Holloman, Fannin and Day. And they'll be placed at the corner of Guadalupe and, and Cottonwood. Do y'all have any questions over that?
You said Grounds?
Grounds, yeah. Over there by Lakeview.
So I mean, I know the ones at Holloman and schools, they got everything set up. How about the Grounds one? Do we have to do anything to those?
Maintenance has been working on it, making them a little prettier, putting a little siding, a little bit of roofing on to them, fixing up the insides of it so that we can move them.
Gerard, we did get some pricing on, it was about ninety-five to a hundred thousand for used portables and about a hundred and fifty thousand for the same size in new. And so we appreciate the work that's going into those right now by our team. But they'll replace carpet, LED lighting, some air conditioning. A couple of them are in great shape, right? They'll pretty much just move over and shampoo the carpets and clean them up. And so we're going to save a lot by moving ours there. So.
And I know you all thought about this, but we're confident in moving the one away from Fannin?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just, oh yeah. We can make it work. Okay. Good. Just got to ask the question. Okay, the, as long, I'm okay with that being consent as long as we get the pricing in Friday fax. You want to present it next week?
I can, whichever way you guys need me to do it.
As long as you get it to us in Friday fax, I'm okay with being consent. We are okay with being consent. How about Fannin? How about our next bid, RFQ twenty twenty-four to three twenty?
This one's for a cooler walk-in freezer at Fannin. With the movement of the students from Altaloma to Fannin has created a need for a new cooler and freezer to increase the storage space. The two units there currently are very, they're old and they are small. The child nutrition department created specifications and the purchasing department requested quotes from current vendors on our trades bid and through purchasing co-ops. Two bids were received from local vendors who perform this type of work. One vendor did not meet specifications by not providing a turnkey solution. They excluded the pricing for concrete. The administration recommends approving the turnkey pricing from A Plus Fabrication of San Angelo to install a walk-in cooler and freezer at Fannin Elementary. Their turn, turnkey price was seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. And we'll have a five thousand dollar contingency added for any additional site work that may need to be done. Do y'all have any questions over that?
Yeah, does this, does this come out of the child nutrition fund or the general fund?
I believe this is coming out of the general fund.
Yes. Yes, we're going to pay for that since it's going into the Fannin construction project as part of that. Even though it's a child nutrition need, it was based on the growth in the, the movement of the students to the campus. So we would like to move that from the, from the general fund.
Is everyone okay with that being consent, consented as?
Thank you all.
Superintendent's recommendations for twenty-four, twenty-five for the teachers and.
So we've got some employees that are contract employees that are not teachers. We'll act on those and then we'll recommend contracts for our teachers, T one, T two counselors, et cetera, that are in part of that same class.
Consent. Everyone okay with consent? Fantastic. And then we'll do and N is the ones that we are not teaching. And that, yeah. So we're going to make that consent as well. And then hours, we have to publicly talk about that, don't we? You have, we have to present that. I have to present that.
Yes, sir.
So we'll make that regular.
Dr. Man, does Dr. Mills have fourteen hours or sixteen hours? Because it shows two hours and fourteen hours. So I want to give him all he can get. So maybe sixteen.
Yeah, I don't think they added the two to my fourteen. So I think it's like Gerard.
Just want to make you get credit where credit is due.
Follow up and double check those numbers.
Yeah.
We don't want to shortchange you.
That's not, either way.
I'm being kicked to the curb.
You've already, you've already beat me. So I can't, can't say that.
We'll double check those.
I was thinking he might have had sixteen. So give him credit.
We will make that regular because it has to be. And then announcements. And other topics. Anyone have any questions for tonight before we?
Dr. Kingman, Mr. Ramirez has shared with you all a calendar invite for district celebration on April nineteenth. For those of you that can make it, at, this event begins at eight thirty at the stadium and it will finish by ten o'clock.
AM.
Correct. Yes, sir. We're not watching any solar eclipse. We will finish quickly.
Park on the visitor's side.
Visitor's side, yes, sir. This year's theme, I know y'all get the emails, but this year's theme is Wild, Wild West rodeo. Wild, wild west for the rodeo. So cowboy boots, cowboy hat, jeans. Or not, whatever you would like to wear. So if you can make it, if you would just let Mr. Ramirez know, Dr. Moran will introduce the board. So.
All right. So everyone let Mr. Ramirez know about that next week, by next week. Is that good enough? All right. With that, we are adjourned.